Appreciate it.
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah, I can figure it out now.
Ready? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to call the special meeting of Benidorm Springs Fire Control and Rescue District for Monday, August 12th, 2019 to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda for this meeting is to interview applicants for the vacant Commissioner's seat two. As it turned out, we only had one applicant and a very able and capable applicant, in my opinion. Mr. Stephen Slakta has a very impressive resume, has a long history with this city, has done eight years with City Council, was the liaison between City Council and us, so you've spent quite a bit of time at our meetings, so you know how much fun they are, and has done countless hours for the veterans and has been... Exactly, and he still wants, he still talks to us and wants to be here, has been a remarkable citizen, and I've been proud to know him, and we're going to go through a little bit of an interview process. We have a couple of questions to ask you, and I think that maybe we'll start tonight with Commissioner Murphy. Do you have some questions?
Welcome, Mr. Slakta. The first question I would have is if you are appointed tonight, which we anticipate, is it your intention to run for office in the fall of 2020?
Yes.
Thank you.
最后一个question.
Commissioner Casilla.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for being here. You're well qualified, and I can't wait for you to get on the board. But I do have one question, that you're jumping in right in the middle of budget negotiations, and I feel bad for you that you're going to be in the middle of that, and I just want you, once you get on the board, to be relaxed and be with us, and I mean, you know where you're coming from, you've been there before. But what, just one other question is what do you feel you're, why do you feel you're qualified to be on the board?
Well, you know, I obviously look at the website and, you know, what the chief talks about, things that are very important to me, like Hickory Boulevard when I was councilman, she always talked about safety and security integrity among the constituents, and I was very, very happy and very supportive of it would be District Seven, the fish place. Okay. And because the other day when they were putting up polls on Hickory Boulevard, it was a one-way traffic hole, and thank God we had the other station there because there's nobody that could get through, it was just packed up like crazy, so that's, you know, that's the important thing, that we, you guys are always looking out for safety and security of the people who are in this pregnancy, and that's how I feel.
Well, thank you. I have high respect for you. I got to meet you when you were City Councilman, and I thought you did a great job, and I'm very proud to have you even apply for this position. Thank you, Steve.
Commissioner Richer.
Thank you, Chairman. First off, I'd like to say you do have a very impressive resume, and thank you for your service to our country, being a Colonel's a big deal.
Who's that?
We still call you Curb. I would like to ask you, what do you feel your greatest strength is, and how would you use that strength to benefit the fire district?
I think my greatest strength is leadership, first of all, working together with the staff, and patience, having a lot of patience, and it's part of being a leader, and I have the leadership skills before you take off, and you're definitely comfortable with that and that. It's just, it's really like giving the try.
So you're used to leading from the front?
No.
Thank you very much.
A few of the questions that have already been asked, the one key one was that you were going to run for the seat in November 2020 because this is kind of a lead into it, and it would be nice to know that you were at least, you know, try to do four more years after that. I've known you for at least eight or nine years. We've known each other for a long time. I've always had respect for you, and I have no doubt in my mind that you will make a fine fire commissioner for us. I think it would even have been true if we'd have had five or six or seven other applicants. I think you still probably would have risen to the top. Again, you said your leadership abilities, your eight years with the city proved to be invaluable, as a 35-year resident of this town, I kind of pay attention to what goes on, and I think we're lucky to have you.
Sure.
Thank you. I got, Alex Grant has some public comment?
Yes. I didn't realize the position was available because from last July's meeting, from what I understood, that you were going to discuss how to do this process of appointing a commissioner. Correct me if I'm wrong, on the July 8th meeting, and at that time, there was a 25-minute discussion back and forth, and you had decided to punt this to the August meeting discussion. I don't know, was this advertised in the newspaper?
Yes.
Because I didn't see it, so I didn't know. Anyway, I have from March the 8th, 16th, my own application for fire commissioner. I can give it to you now, you can have it for another time.
I have to check with administration on, can we still accept?
The date was closed.
Can you do that for another time?
No, we cannot. You have to go through, there's a cycle in advertising, and you have to turn it in during that time, so we would not, it would not be proper for us to accept it.
Could I have instruction to the fire chief to inform me by phone in person the next time you have a vacancy?
I would say probably not, because we cannot show any favoritism. We advertise the job, it's just like, it's just like if we advertise for a fireman's job, we can't call a particular fireman and ask him to run for the job.
Can you post that on the outside then?
That would be something that you'd have to make an appointment and come in and talk to administration about changing that. As far as I'm concerned, the state can, well, actually, it's our policy, it's not even the state, because we don't even have to advertise it, we could just appoint somebody. But through our standard operating procedure here, we do advertise it, and it was advertised, the window was open to put in an application, and the window is now closed unfortunately, and we can't change that now.
Well, the next time there's an opening, just for future reference, I'm willing to do the fire commissioner position for free. You do not have to, would not have to pay me anything, you would not have to pay me any pension, I would do it strictly as a volunteer.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, motion, oh, you have something else to add?
I'd like to make the motion, if I may, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Steve Slakta.
I think that's going to, I think...
Is that later? That's at the regular meeting, excuse me, I'll withdraw that motion.
I think, I mean, what my understanding is, we make the motion at the regular meeting, or can we make the motion at this meeting?
The motion at the regular meeting.
That's what I thought. Okay. Then we're going to, if everybody's okay, we're going to adjourn this portion, and we'll reconvene at five.
One minute.
Item number five.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular monthly board meeting of the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District, Monday, August 12th, 2019, to order invocation by Chaplain Chet Wood.
We want to take a few moments of silence for four firefighters that have lost their lives for the past month across the US, and follow that with a prayer. God, we give honor to those that have made a sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice in service, and I pray that you'll be with the families who've lost these loved ones, Lord. I thank you for the dedication and the service of firefighters everywhere. We pray for the protection of our firefighters here in Benita, that you will watch over them, protect them and their families. We thank you for our freedom, Lord, and we thank you for the privilege we have of just living and serving together in this community. I pray that you always grant wisdom to those who lead and guide. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of a new commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Steve Slakda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Swearing in.
Yep, Commissioner Slakda, if you'd come up to the front, and Chrissy will swear you in.
Mr. Slakda, please repeat after me. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of fire commissioner for the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District District. Lee County, on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome aboard. Next item, I need a motion for the July 3rd, 2019 Audit Selection Workshop Minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
July 3rd, 2019 Budget Workshop Minutes, need a motion for that, approve those?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? And July 8th, 2019 Regular Meeting Minutes, need a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor? Need one motion for the July 2019 and current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgment of financial report, the acknowledgment of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and budgeted purchases, purchase orders over $10,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Next, next item is years of service acknowledgements, Chief Tagle.
Yes, sir, good evening. We do have presentations for service years, and first we have firefighter, paramedic Ray Perez, I don't see him here, is he here? No, he's not here, 15 years of service for firefighter Perez. Also Lieutenant EMT Dave Brewer, for 25 years of service, I don't see him here either. Dave got hired, I think, six months, well, seven months after I did, I believe. But if I may, sir, I did want to take this moment to recognize Janet Washburn, our new fire marshal. She's been working with Tim now for a week or two, how long has it been? Third week, wow, time flies. I did just want to read a little bit about
Just don't pick up his bad habits.
He doesn't have any.
I know, just kidding.
He actually dressed for the occasion. I did just want to touch on some of her, some of her achievements and what she has done. She retired from the City of Hollywood Fire Rescue and Beach Safety. She is a firefighter, paramedic, a fire prevention, pardon me, Fire Prevention Officer One, Fire Prevention Officer Two, Senior Fire Prevention Officer Three. She was an acting fire code official and fire marshal, Division Chief, for the City of Hollywood. Additionally, for her education in committees, I'm just touching on, she has a rather extensive resume. She did attend the Harvard School of Executive Education Leadership in Decision Making in Cambridge, Massachusetts. She has a Master's of Science of Leadership from Northeastern University, Boston, Mass. A Bachelor of Arts in Organizational Leadership from St. Thomas University, Miami. Associates of Science of Fire Science from Broward, Broward College, Davie, Florida. An Associate of Science of Fashion Merchandising from Westbrook College, Portland, is Portland, yeah, correct. Some of the important state and national committees. She's been on the Florida Fire Marshal and Inspectors Association Legislative Committees. Also has served with NFPA for quite some time, which is a very prestigious appointment. That's just a few of her acknowledgements, and I just wanted to welcome her officially to the team. She's going to be fantastic for the City of Benita Springs and our district.
You think you found somebody qualified for the job?
And that is all we have for presentations, sir.
Awesome, welcome aboard too, glad to have you. You've got big shoes to fill, but it sounds like you're not going to have any problems. Commissioner's business, start with Commissioner Maturio, got anything?
Just any word on when we're going to have the grand opening for the park.
We are working on a date to actually set the cornice piece for the 9/11 piece. Other than that, it's probably going to be September 11th
Okay.
for the opening.
Sounds good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Slakda, if you had anything you'd like to say, or you just
Just glad to be on the board, thank you very much.
Okay, pleasure to have you. Commissioner Crissilla?
No, other than welcoming Steve to our board, he'd be a great asset, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
I would like to recommend that we have a membership in the Speakers Assembly in Benita Springs. I think it's a fine organization with good representation. We haven't had a representation to that yet. And if we have a membership by the district, I believe that any one of the commissioners or officers can attend, which I believe is about six different speakers at the Hyatt Regency per year. Great networking, great PR for our district. And I would ask for approval of the commissioners for one of us to have a membership.
Sure, do you want it to be a commissioner, or do you want it to be an administrative person, or?
I think that it would be best if we had it with the commissioners, for the public relations.
Okay. Do we have a volunteer to do that, or? I don't think we need, we don't have to need to vote on it.
I don't think you need to volunteer any one of us, I'd be willing to attend some of them, if not most of them. However, I think it should be open to all commissioners on a rotating basis, perhaps.
Do they have a general membership, or is there a personal membership?
Well, we'll have to find out, I don't have all the details.
Yeah, maybe, maybe at the next meeting, bring it, we'll get together and see if there's a cost factor involved, and who's going to do it.
I made some phone calls today and wasn't able to get ahold of anyone.
Okay, so maybe at the next meeting, we just throw it on and have some information.
There's going to be a speaker, which is going to be the Lee County Sheriff, which will be on August 30th. I would hope we'd have a membership for that meeting.
Okay, well, I, I mean, we have approval as long as, I think we have a consensus to do that, as long as there's not a really high cost involved in it. That would have to be something that we vote on, but I can't imagine it would be very much money.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I have, I have nothing other than to welcome Steve to the board, it's going to be a pleasure working with you. Next item, old business, anybody got anything under old business they want to bring up?
What would be our status of the 9/11 memorial?
I think that, I think that was just asked and answered, wasn't it?
Yes, sir, he's saying hopefully, Chief, go ahead.
Yes, we'll send that out, we were just waiting for the appropriate time to actually set the piece. We have, it's all ready to go. The only thing we have to do is set a date, which will be, the actual piece is inside Station One in the bay. Everything's ready to go, the only thing we have to do is set it on top of the, I guess we'd call it the holding portion, so we're waiting for the Assistant Chief to get back, so he would be able to attend as well. So we'll send that out, it should be, it could be any day now. Deputy Chief Madden?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything?
As soon as the weather breaks, we'll plan that, we'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I add something to that?
Absolutely.
I went over there the other day, and I, and I know that Assistant Chief DeWitt and, and everybody, especially Chief Madden, they've really been working hard. For the public, I just want to say, this park is phenomenal. It's really, really took off, and it has legs of its own now. This was the chief's, you know, had the foresight to have something like that, make use of that property. And I really feel, without getting too windy talking, it's going to be a destination in Benita, it's a beautiful park, absolutely beautiful. You guys did an amazing job, thank you.
Anybody else, anything old business?
If I may. Chief, do you, do we know who the speaker is for 9/11? I'm a little behind catching up on everything, but
We do not.
You do not?
As of yet, no, sir. We will, we will find out as soon as, as soon as I get information regarding that, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, under new business, I need a motion for the disposal of assets.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Lawn maintenance contract bid for Four Seasons Lawn Care, need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Pest control contract bids, explain here, there's two. And it's a significant difference in, explain.
A significant difference in price, yes, sir, they both cover the same thing. It's a different in price, we have Hewlett now, so that's who we've been using. Even with the additional stations, the, the price still is, is very, very competitive of what they, they charge us normally. So we're probably going to go with Hewlett, if it's a
So your recommendation is for us to
Yes, sir.
Okay, need a mo, you want No, go ahead, ask a question.
I have a question on how has the service been, I mean, in the past?
Excellent, excellent, we haven't had one problem.
Well, you know, it's not a huge contract, and twenty-some hundred dollars difference is fairly significant between two, if it's apples to apples.
Yes, sir, apples to apples to apples.
Need a motion to accept the Hewlett Environmental Services Contract?
So moved. I'll second that.
All in favor? Need a motion to accept the chief's contract adjustment?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chief's report, Chief Tagle.
Yes, sir. I did want to backtrack a little bit, councillor, or councillor, I'm sorry, sir. Commissioner Slakda would like, I could work with you on the speaker, because I know you've been involved with that in the past.
Well, I have, have some thoughts. For example, there's an American Legion adjutant up in Orlando Headquarters, and he said that he would be happy to come down and speak, and stay a couple days to, so, but that's up to you. It should be up to the Veterans Advisory Council, but, you know, like I said, due to my father's death, I'm not, not with it yet, so, but I will be.
The other item I had was, I did want to inform the board that the district received an award that actually is attributed to Deputy Chief Scott's work with the RFID program. Also with Mr. Kaufman's work with the repeater system on the trucks. Unbeknownst to us, they called us and told us, you're getting an award. It's a special district southeast 2019 Technology and Innovation Award for the Operations category for technology projects. Just wanted to let the board know that, and the outstanding work that's been
For the public, explain that, what it is, instead of, you know, it's just so you can clear it up for the record. We all know what it is, but just for the public, just maybe give a brief description of
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll let Deputy Chief Scott talk about the RFID program, which is part of, we've discussed before, but we'll do a brief overview of what that is.
Okay. You are familiar with this, we've been doing this about three years ago, I think, originally, I made a presentation in here. And it's come up several times over the last few years. There's been probably a dozen at least different departments that have come here and looked at it and seen it. So I think what, what, what they were acknowledging is just it's a, it's a step, I think, ahead of the curve a little bit in technology in the State of Florida. And for money savings, efficiency, you know, there's a multitude of things that it saves, and I think it was just recognition
Can you explain what it does?
Oh, I'm sorry. So our assets that we have, anything over $750 in the entire fire department, whether it be in this building, on the engine, fire engines outside, even the new boat, the motors, the electronics, and all of the EMS, medical medications, and equipment that we carry, all of it have a radio frequency ID tag on that. So what it does is that at every station, we have a room that inventories all these items real time, live, constantly. So it cut down on, because of the visibility we now have at each station, our amount of supplies that we have to carry has probably cut in half financially. In other words, we save over 50% on our budget the first year we did it. And that has continued over the last three, now going on four years. So that's one of the biggest, I think, advantages that a lot of these departments have looked at, is the amount of savings. And efficiency, because we know where everything is, what we have, expiration dates. We don't have to run around kind of having people chase their tails, so to speak, when we run out of things. And really what it comes down to, I guess in the end, the most important thing is, the things that are supposed to be on the truck to save people's lives are on the truck. The right ones, and never, never expired, so it's, it's a pretty big project. Now it runs smooth, it doesn't hurt Karen any effort at all.
Good job.
Basically, the other, the other program was worked on with the Prevention Division and Jim Kaufman, which they figured out that they could, instead of having an in-house communication system like Rural King, that they pay $17,000 for a radio enhancement
That's actually what I thought he was going to talk about.
It was both. It was both, for the radio enhancement fund, so the, I'll just use Rural King for an example, I don't even know what the number was, I think it was $100,000, Jim? About $100,000 they were going to have to utilize to put these, this in-building system. Instead, they just paid the district a $17,000 fee
Yeah, I remember, that was, I think that was the first one, wasn't it?
That was the first one, yes, sir. A fee to provide the money to put these repeaters on the trucks, which does as good, probably a better job, because normally during a fire, if the building's burning down, so is the internal communication system.
Right.
So it actually worked out better, and it's given us coverage through all of our high rises, out in Benita Bay and on the coast. So that was one of the innovative
Just to be clear, this is the, the radio communications
Yes, sir.
which have been a problem in some of the buildings, so that was all part of that.
For years, we couldn't figure out the best way to, to get penetration into these buildings, but Mr. Kaufman in the Prevention Division, meaning Fire Marshal Fernandez, figured this was the best way to go. And I believe the rest of the county is, is moving in the same direction.
Awesome.
So basically, Mr. Kaufman saved the district about $83,000 then, is what you're saying?
Well, he, what he really did was save the community, the business owners in the buildings, from having to put in those expensive systems. But what he did was, him and the Fire Prevention Division, was create a system that allows for firefighter safety in areas that were hard to reach through radio communication.
You went from being a bureaucrat to a nice guy that they like you at Rural King, which is awesome.
Great job, guys, thank you.
Good job. Chief, you still have anything else?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Assistant Chief DeWitt?
Good.
Do you have anything to add, Deputy Chief? We have
Actually, I have something to add, sir.
Okay, good, hey, awesome.
Who was that guy?
We recently, we completed the construction of our burn can. I don't know if you guys have been out there to see it or not, but it's, it's pretty impressive. I just wanted to break down the cost for you real quick, I know we have a busy evening. We used a company called Abston, Abston Services, to complete this. When the Assistant Chief and I started this project a year ago, we were getting bids up to a half a million dollars to put some, to put something up that was two containers big. It was, just wasn't cost effective. So we researched, we researched, and we came up with this company, Abston Services, who built these places for these fire colleges around the state. So they came down and they built a 5,600 square foot burn facility. It's two stories big, it has an internal stairwell, it has an external stairwell, two roof props. We're going to put all kinds of roof props in this thing. $126,000. So that's a fraction of the cost that would have cost us to build something a third of the size. They charged us $97,000 to build it. We bought the containers for $25,000, we had them transported here, they took the old ones out. We had to rent a forklift for $4,000. And then we used $154 in oxygen to cut the thing up when Assistant Chief and I took it away. So $126,000 and it's, it's priceless, it's twice as big as the other burn facility at the Fort Myers Fire Academy, so we're really lucky to have that in our backyard.
I would recommend, if the board has time at some point, time to walk through it. It's very impressive.
If I may.
Very impressive.
I, Assistant Chief showed me this facility, and being in my background, I was extremely impressed with it. The most impressive part of it was the two-end containers, which were, are going to be the fire containers, where they're going to be burns are going to be, can be cut apart, cut off and replaced without destroying the internal structure of the rest of it. It's an incredible system, I really, my hats off to you guys, because, I mean, in my career, I've seen them, but nothing as, as, as well-made and well-thought-out as this one, and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Good job. Public comment? We're now going to move this meeting into a closed executive session, and we will then come back out and adjourn the meeting, but for all intents and purposes, the meeting is over, we're just not officially adjourned it, we're moving into an executive session. Thank you.